Comment as we always do. Now I lost my meeting. Okay, so if you'd like to make a comment, put your name in the chat. It's really just a meeting for updates, so.
Paula Donnelly.
Paula Donnelly, great, Paula.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me? I'm not used to this particular platform.
Yes, we can hear you just fine.
Okay, thank you. I was just, I just wanted to say very briefly, I know that the committee at some point will determine whether or not to continue to implement school choice for the next school year. And I just wanted to speak for a moment about my position that I do hope that you will. My daughter is, we live in Gloucester, my daughter is a second grader at Essex Elementary, and we have a rising kindergartner. And from a very selfish perspective, we certainly see the advantages of, you know, both of our children being able to attend the same school. And part of, you know, I think we feel more strongly about that, not just for practical reasons, but that we've had the opportunity to see what a phenomenal job, Essex has done with SEL support, and I think that that's so critical for students hopefully returning to normal after a pandemic. You know, we'd love to see both of our kids have as much time as possible in such a high-quality school district, in such a high-quality building. You know, we really can't say enough about how pleased we are with the administration, the calls for the communication. We're really, we're really thrilled with it and just hope that other students would have the same opportunity. I know that the fiscal advantage of it may not ultimately outweigh some of the more practical considerations that the committee and the district will have. But I do hope that it will continue to be implemented. And I want to point out that I could certainly understand concerns about, like, community contamination, but I know that the school districts, you know, special education out of district placements don't seem to have been impacted by, you know, the fear of, you know, children from other communities attending schools in different ones. So I would hope that, you know, the district will hopefully enroll school choice students for the following school year. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you for your comment, Paula. I don't see anyone else in the chat. Is there anyone on who's calling in on the phone who would like to make a comment? Okay, thank you. So then we'll shut down the chat. And also, if you happen to have, if everybody could just double-check and make sure that you are muted, that would be helpful.
Sarah, there's a raised hand from a call-in. I don't know if it was, it's a Kate, I don't know if it's Kate Santos, but there was a raised hand.
If you're calling.
It was me, I'm sorry, I didn't raise my hand. I don't know how to call in.
Oh, okay, that's okay, no problem. Okay, all right. So that's it for public comment. And then I saw that Lucas is here. Lucas, do we have a student report from you?
I am here, yep.
Great, go ahead.
All right, so we just came back from winter break, which is really nice. Winter sports have already started. I think they started sometime before we got out. And I actually asked one of my friends, because he does swim, just to see, you know, how his experience has been so far. And he told me that, you know, basically, it's been pretty good with social distancing and everything. They have to wear masks when they're out of the pool, and kind of like maintain that, you know, six feet distancing, just standard protocol. But he told me that, you know, like, he's really missing the social aspect of it, of course, because, you know, teammates are interacting with each other less often now. And not only that, just like fewer kids are doing swim now, apparently. There are only eight kids on the team this year, and last year there were around 40. So, you know, there's obviously been like a significant drop in participation. I don't know if that's the case with all winter sports, but it definitely is with swim. And so aside from all that, just in terms of things coming up for students, quarter two ends next week, at the end of next week, actually, the 15th. And so, you know, things are starting to get a little bit more busy for students as we approach the end of quarter two and the end of semester one and move into semester two. And of course, we're also transitioning into hybrid pretty soon. So it's going to be interesting to see how all that plays out for both students and teachers. And I'll be sure to, you know, collect some feedback from students on that as well when the time comes. But for now, I think that's, yeah, everything I have to say.
Thanks, Lucas. That's awesome. Does anyone on school committee have questions for Lucas? Usually Shannon wants to fire off a few, but I guess we're going to let you off the hook tonight, Lucas. Thank you so much for your report. And yeah, please keep us posted, especially as we move into hybrid. We'd love to hear.
Of course, yep.
Okay, I have a very short, short report. What did I say? Happy New Year. I hope that everyone had a safe and healthy holiday. And just if you're tuning in and you're not usually here, this is not a usual meeting night, because generally, we just meet on alternate Tuesdays, but we just thought it would be good to schedule an extra meeting as we return to school after the holiday break. And it's going to give us an opportunity to hear updates on the transition indicators and the plan to move the middle and high school to the hybrid learning and the possible testing program, and more about winter athletics, and of course, the budget. So if you came to tune in tonight, thank you so much for joining us. And I will pass it over. Oh, we need that, we have the consent agenda. We did get some warrants. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move, but I don't see any minutes on it. Am I missing anything?
You are not, we do not, we did not include the 12:15 minutes to use, so we're going to push those to next Tuesday meeting.
Okay. So I'll make the motion to accept the warrants.
Warnock seconds.
All right, we have to do roll call vote, so Eric?
Wait, I have a couple of questions about the warrant.
Discussion, go ahead, Annie.
Um, Avi. So, you know, I looked at the notes that you sent with the voucher, and I just wondered if you could talk to us a little bit about the boiler and what the cost would have been of insurance. You know, I think, you know, it is what it is, we made a decision. I just wonder what the cost of the insurance would have been for the time that we did not, well, we did have.
We did have insurance.
We just had a deductible of 50.
Yeah, yeah, we was insured. The brief background around this is that the Maya, our insurer, did not want to maintain insurance on any portion of the Memorial School during construction. And because it's a phased project, they felt like they didn't want to continue to insure the portion that wasn't yet being built. So we got an $8800 credit to our insurance policy and had to add a roughly $50,000 insurance item by going out to market, which we did, solicit other options. And that was with a high deductible. So, you know, it was already, to be honest, very unfavorable pricing to begin with. And I think we took the approach, this is something that we had discussed with the building project team, because ultimately, the insurance had to be added on to the builder's risk policy, which is the portion that's very typical to have where the construction company ensures the portion of work that they're building as it's being built in case something goes wrong, if there's any loss there. So we felt like it was sufficiently inefficient pricing to begin with, that to have a low deductible for a small period of time didn't make a lot of sense, you know. And obviously, I wouldn't say it was a gamble, but I would just say that the way this broke out was not very favorable to us, you know. And I think it was kind of an educated decision, but it comes with a cost. I think our real purpose of insurance for that short period of time is to really protect against significant loss. And that's why we set the deductible at 50,000 for that period.
Yeah, I mean, that's a big hit and unfortunate, you know, based on where we are with the project and how close we are to having it, you know, to being able to leave that portion of the building. It just really stinks. Um, you know, and in terms of lessons learned, you know, just, and I'm not, I hope you're not hearing, I'm not casting judgment, I'm just wondering, you know, we still have one more building, you know, would we do anything differently in retrospect, or, you know, if, when we approached the next project, or, can you speak to that at all?
Uh, well, I can tell you that we did make our opinion known to Maya at the time when they indicated they wouldn't cover the portion that was kind of not under construction, so much so that the broker who works for Maya but kind of represents us was also going to bat for us and I think also frustrated. And then subsequently, Maya started getting into the builder's risk business, which I felt like kind of added insult to injury. So I'm not sure what we would have done differently, to be honest. The existing policy on the Essex Elementary School, I mean, maybe if this ever happens again and Maya does the same thing, maybe we would lower the deductible and just continue to eat costs in the construction budget. You know, the portion, you know, a significant portion of it's going to, you know, would otherwise fall to the general fund budget. So I think we were just trying to be, have that balance. So maybe we would have a lower deductible in the future, I'm not, you know, I'd have to think about that. We, you know, that is something that we ran by the broker to get their advice too. So certainly, it wasn't something that we decided unilaterally on our own, but I'm happy to kind of push back to them about that and see if they recommend a change in the future. I don't mind inquiring about that.
Yeah, and how old was this boiler? I know we had all this information in the docs for the, for the vote, but what was?
I don't, so there was some pumps that got hit as well as, it wasn't the boiler itself, it was the circulator pumps and some of the other adjacent equipment. So I don't think that those items got replaced. You may remember that we actually had to get a temporary boiler for Memorial while we were getting ready to get the building project going. You know, we were kind of hoping to have that. Yeah, so that one actually did end up getting covered by insurance because construction hadn't started yet. So we kind of, we actually got somewhat lucky there. It was possible that they could have told us at the time that, hey, it's an old boiler, it's on you, but they took it as an emergency loss. So sometimes we get good news from Maya, so. But, you know, I think, yeah, the, the equipment, I would have to get the answer for you on how old it was, but it's not new equipment.
Okay. And then the COVID costs, or, I'm sorry, did anyone have a question about this? I apologize.
I was just going to ask, Avi may have said this at the top of your comments, and I was organizing something and I may have missed it, but really, the situation we were in with the insurance is because it was a phased project and we had to inhabit part of the building, it would have been too much of a risk to go without, because if we had lost the building to something catastrophic, we would have been on the hook for finding a location of the place we call a student, correct?
Yeah, oh yeah, there was, I think, never a question that we would go without insurance for the existing building. It's just a question of the loss being, you know, at the level in the mid-30s, where that's where the high deductible hit. That's really the purpose of the high deductibles, to say, like, if something happens, if you have a roof failure, something massive, you're covered there. But other than that, the building isn't worth that much, because as you can tell, by the $8800 credit we got for taking, you know, it off of insurance, it's just, what's, you know, the problem is going into heating season, we can't, we can't be without fully functioning circulator pumps and all that equipment. You know, for the small amount of, you know, activity that's happening in the old wing, it's still sufficient that we have to make sure it's getting sparkled. Good news is that the project, the building project is so well ahead of budget, and I think this number in comparison to the building project budget is very, very minor. So is there a chance that we could consider covering this either through our stabilization fund, or, you know, I don't know if it would be eligible for coverage under the building project, I could certainly ask our project managers. You know, those two funding areas are doing really quite well, so that could be an option if we get to the end of the year and we're feeling like the general fund budget is under a lot of pressure.
Yeah, um, so just two things about specifically this, which is, as we build our budget for this fiscal year, you know, we need to be mindful of the fact that we have an aging building in Essex. And these kinds of things are never anticipated, and they happen and they're costly, so it's a risk. And I just want to make sure that we account for this sort of thing in our budget. And I'm communicating that out to the two towns, that, you know, these hits can really set you back in planning for other kind of proactive measures you're trying to take in terms of capital costs. Second thing is, Pam, it's very hard to hear you. You sound like you're on the other side of the room.
I just made an adjustment, is that right?
Sure, you do, much better. And then COVID costs, that's a significant investment there, and I'm hoping that the equipment that we've invested in here will be able to use when we're not in COVID. And it's just, it's, this is really racking up costs.
It's been, it has been, you know, a focus to say, what can we do to make sure we can keep construction happening? And in some cases, to do that, it really has required us to do things a little bit differently. I think generally, we tend to be very cautious about spending, but, you know, with regard to some of the investments in technology, you know, for making hybrid happen in the classroom, I think there are some things around earphones or microphones that you might be referring to. You know, there are some solutions we looked at about, you know, video solutions that were significantly more costly. And I think we found a good middle ground on how to use some of the technology and some of the CARES Act money to do that. But you're, you're right, we've talked before about the cost of COVID, and it's not insignificant. So we're doing what we can to be thoughtful and prudent. Every expense we do goes through a quick review, where Pam and I will typically just talk about what's happening, but, you know, it, you know, it's expensive to completely change what we're doing to serve kids who are half in the building, half outside. So I think you're right.
I think what we've learned about COVID too is it also brings to light areas that needed to be attended to or may have been underdeveloped. And I do think that our technology investment has been underdeveloped over the years, so we, we rely quite heavily on a bring-your-own-device approach at the secondary level. So I think the investment timeline was hastened by COVID, but I don't know that many of the investments wouldn't, won't have long-term positive gains for our integration of technology into our program.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question on the COVID, the COVID spending in general? With the legislation, wasn't the COVID spending deadline kicked out another year? Did I read that correctly? So that's.
Correct.
Right?
Uh, it's certainly, you know, what we need, to be blunt, is additional funding. But having additional time to work through what is and isn't covered is helpful as we try to navigate the many different funding streams and different agencies that are overseeing what they will and want to improve, FEMA being the most noteworthy, as we've discussed. So it is helpful to have that extra time. I think the other factor is as we work with the towns to kind of see how we might partner with them on some of the CARES Act dollars they received. Having additional time allows us to kind of compare notes and see where, where there might be additional funding. And it allows us also to spend money on things that might be COVID-related in January, February, et cetera. I know we've talked about some of the things we'll talk about tonight, like testing being an example. So there are a couple of benefits from that, even if we're not yet seeing additional funds, which, which we really, I think, would be appropriate, given the expectations of what schools are expected to do to make sure we can keep things running.
Any other discussion on the warrants or questions for Avi?
Sarah, I need the voucher number, please. Voucher number?
1027, 1027.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gail.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, so I don't think, is Eric here? I think Eric is not here.
Okay, Eric is not here.
Okay, so we just need to approve the warrant. So Annie?
Yes, I'm a yes.
Shannon?
I'm a yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Yes, and I'm a yes. So warrants are accepted. Thank you for all that, Avi. And I, do we have any subcommittee reports tonight?
No, not for finance or facilities.
No. Okay. So we'll just go straight to the, for attendance report? Sure. Great.
So the original intent of having a meeting tonight was just to make sure we had a meeting scheduled, should there be any drastic changes in COVID metrics over the holiday break that may cause us to have to change plans for hybrid learning resuming this week, or change any plans, change any dates on our timeline for hybrid implementation. As of today, there is nothing to, nothing to necessitate a change in our timeline. I was able to have a quick check-in with both Board of Health liaisons from each town yesterday, and we are basically in the same position we were at on 1215, which is we're seeing increasing numbers in both Manchester and Essex, with Manchester being in red, Essex being in yellow, but there's no in-school spread identified. So at this point, we can carry forward. There's no concern at this point for the schools presenting a public health risk to the communities. So students came back at the elementary this week, today, for their hybrid instruction, and we will continue on that until the metrics tell us otherwise. Again, Essex is in yellow, Manchester's in red. We will have a quick meeting again on Friday after the numbers come out to see if there's anything that's changed. We will continue with these regular weekly check-ins with the towns on the numbers to make sure we're all interpreting the data correctly and interpreting the impact on the schools with some guidance from professionals and the boards of health. One thing to note, and I'll show you the numbers, and the second is that we did have several staff members identified as positive over break. They were all external contacts, so I think that is a, that is also similar to the December report, that we are seeing increased number of positives, but the positives all stem from external activities. And the contacts that are identified, for the most part, are external contacts. So if you look at our internal close contacts, so student to student or staff to student within the building, I think we had, sort of, within the months of December. So that's why we're landing on the fact that in school, there isn't, at school, there isn't in-school spread, but clearly, our population is reflecting the population of the North Shore and what's happening overall. So again, we'll just keep monitoring and seeking advice on how it impacts our work. Testing is coming along with the approval of our go-forward plan on 1215 and the holiday right on its heels. We didn't quite have time to meet our goal of being completely operational for next week. With the contract that came in from Ginkgo, we wanted our attorneys to take a look at it and review the liability and the consent documentation. We want to make sure we get particularly the consent to participate right. And I think the debate is between an opt-out or a written consent in. So as soon as they help us resolve that, and we're hopeful it's within the next couple of days, we will be ready to move forward. I think they're trying to schedule training for our nursing staff at the end of this week. So today, if you ask me, I would say our delay is going to be one week, so that week of January 19th as opposed to the week of January 11th for a start date. Shannon raised a question about the CARES dollars being able now to roll into 21. This is particularly helpful, so in addition to working on some of the bureaucratic components of rolling out testing, we were also, I was very nervous at the, in December, on how we were going to make a pre-purchase using the CARES dollars appropriately. So Avi and I spent a lot of time digging in, and Avi did a great job of identifying what our constraints were, and it was essentially that we would have had to purchase and receive the materials by 1231 for us to access the CARES dollars prior to their changing the guidelines. So one of the biggest benefits that we're going to see out of the change in the CARES, the CARES Act utilization, is that it's given us a little bit more time to study the issue and identify our quantities, because Ginkgo had also had a price change from what we originally were quoting in terms of buying the batches. So hopefully by next week, I'll have the revised cost proposal, just so we all know what we're investing in and what the actual dollar figure will be that we're going to be seeking for the CARES Act. So just a few more conversations and details to work out here. And I do think it's important, I would have loved to have it up and running next week, I just think it's important that we do our due diligence on the liability and consent side, and are also very clear on what our financial, our financial commitment is going to be, and that we're all comfortable with that number. So again, many thanks to Tanya Colvis for helping us and being early, it's not to Ginkgo, she's been fantastic, fielding a lot of emails from us, but we really, we wouldn't be in this position to even be on the verge of rolling it out without her. So many thanks, many thanks to her. Just the overview picture I provided to you with each report. The first report we did had many towns in the green and the unshaded, you're going to see right now on the North Shore, and this represents Cape Town League with the Astrid communities being communities we have a high level of interaction with. Majority of our Cape Town League is in red and the rest are in yellow. We are split between the two categories. So it's, you know, it's an increasingly concerning picture. Again, the positive is, most of the school, I think we're split between who is in remote and who is in hybrid right now for this week, but most, everyone is planning to continue forward with their plans, and some like Winthrop, who have been out since the beginning of the year, began hybrid this week. So again, rule of thumb is, we know, the community picture is being discussed quite heavily in the news. Essex County, I think, is a hotspot, but the rule of thumb we're following now is impacting school and spread in school. And if we can keep the school as a safe environment, we're going to continue forward. So that's the COVID map update. Happy to take questions. And then staffing, again, not much has changed since 1215 because there was very few, very few number of business days between then and now, but staffing at elementary is in the same position. And the nurses did a fantastic job yesterday, pre-screening all of our elementary families and staff, based on what travel may have taken place over the break. And we were able to identify, that we were able to start school today without having any concerns for staffing shortage, and making sure that everybody who needed to quarantine based on what they did over break did. So that was a success. We're always going to be fighting the battle of needing more subs than we, needing more subs than we have for the vacant, for the absences that may develop due to COVID. But the principals have been doing a fantastic job of utilizing staff to make sure we are functional each day. So if you go back to this chart, we've only lost seven days to, in the month of December, we've only lost seven classes to lack of classroom coverage. So we haven't had to shut down at all, but there have been seven instances where a class may have had to go remote because we couldn't staff it on that particular day. The number may not sound great, but I think in talking with colleagues today, this is what everyone is experiencing and dealing with, and we have been very lucky in that we haven't had a substantial number of outages that have led to a full school shutdown. So this is a number that we watch, and this is the work that the nurses are doing on a daily basis to make sure we know what our staffing levels are going to look like based on COVID quarantines. Secondary staffing, we remain at the 93% resolved. I would say we are very close to 100%. We're just waiting on a few formalization letters. There was a change in the FF-CRA language statute, it expired on 1231, so we're just tying up some loose ends of people who were anticipating using that option to see what their alternative plan will be. So we are ready to go forward at the secondary. Program remains intact. I think I referenced in our last meeting that student learning time report was due out. It published, I believe, on New Year's Eve Day. And it shows that we are meeting or exceeding student direct teacher contact learning time, and that is a combination of both in-person and online. But the key ingredient there is that the student's time is direct contact with the teacher. So we do not have, as part of our structure, designed asynchronous learning. That's not to say there may not be a day where there's a teacher absent. That's not to say there may not be a day where there's a teacher absent and there's an asynchronous set of activities provided, but by design, our program offers a full synchronous day for students, whether they're in the hybrid format or at home. And then budget, we hope to have some updated numbers next week, but as I stated last time on the 12/15 meeting, I do think we're going to be over budget. And when I'm saying over budget, I'm referring to the $300,000. We advanced ourselves out of reserves to cover staffing needs. I do think when we have finished the middle-high school staffing replacements, we are going to be slightly over that, but hopefully, we'll have that update for you as part of the budget next week. I don't think this should prevent us from going forward. We originally were looking at it, looking at the budget and the finances as one of the indicators to get started. I think we're going to be well within range that it would be. Anything that's over budget is painful, but I don't think it will be enough over budget that we should change our planning for implementation. So, that's the general COVID report. Any questions on the metrics or where we stand, and then I'll just give you a brief update on middle-high school, or do you want me to just continue through and then I'll do questions again?
I think Annie has a question.
Okay.
I have a question. I have a couple, actually, surprisingly. The travel requirements, I know that I had to drive a kid just to home and had to, I left the state for the day and had to quarantine and test, and I know there's been travel among families in the community. Also, there's the skiing issue. I'm just wondering about compliance with the travel law, which is a law. $500 a day penalty if you're not following the law and figuring out, doing the testing and the forms and all that sort of thing. You know, when people come to our school and don't know if they're healthy or if they're not testing, you know, that risks the entire, you know, what we're trying to do here. So, I wonder if you could speak a little bit to the compliance on that travel law?
I don't think I can give you anything anecdotal or statistical on compliance. What I can say is that the MyMedBot process, so the daily attestation runs on the honor system, and we have to trust our community members to be truthful in their reporting. I can say that we have a nursing team that is on top of the work of following up on anybody that presents with concerns. They get a data report from that attestation every morning and personally call the people in their school community that present as flagged to make sure that they analyze their situation, apply their good judgment and understanding of the regulations, and then ask them to either follow up with testing, quarantine, or okay them to report to school. So, based on what we can control, I think we're doing an excellent job to manage the situation, but in terms of enforcing state law, we have to count on everybody in the community to do their part there.
I hope they're doing that. Question about testing.
Yep.
If testing ends up being more costly than we had anticipated in December, do we have to revote that, or what's, well, I know you're going to give us that information next week. I just wondered if...
We can certainly revote it if you like. The way we're structured right now, we're getting the month of January for free, so we can certainly bring it forward for a vote next month. The goal is to use town COVID dollars to, town CARES dollars to fund it. So, I think as long as the towns are okay with the adjusted number, I think we could go forward based on your vote because you did approve the program. I do think we should just have full disclosure to the extent that we can on what the cost is going to be. I think the other thing we might want to look at is if we approved, I think the total was about $65,000 with $35,000 in materials, we may want to go to a different, instead of every week, do you want to do every other week type of thing? So, I think those are the things we'll bring forward next week after we have just a few more days to work through, to work through a couple of the paperwork items. So, yes, I think it would be good for us to agree on the revised budget.
Perfect. In terms of vaccine, I know that the Policy Committee is going to be addressing that, and I heard that there was an extension above the flu vaccine requirement to the end of February. So, I don't know if you need to say anything, but if you might want to.
So, the flu vaccine is something we deal with pretty much all of the time. Vaccinations in general, the nurses are well-versed in. So, I think, again, it's the honor system. There's a mandate, but I would call it a soft mandate because there's no mechanism for enforcement, and there are options which allow people to opt out of getting the flu shot. My guess is we'll see the same thing with the vaccine, and the question for this committee will be, do you want to attempt to take a harder line? And I think it's Policy Committee work, but it's also legal teamwork, because if the state allows for exemptions based on health or religion, I think it will become a larger question than just one for Manchester, Essex, as to whether or not we can prevent students from attending school.
Yeah. And then just a final note. I noticed on your report that Linfield is red, and I know we played that in basketball. So, how's this working? I thought we weren't playing teams that had, that were in the red.
Well, we're in the red as well, and it shifted, right? Originally, it was in the red, no play. It's now shifted to in the red, no play, maybe go remote if it's been for three weeks, and now it's if there is no identified in-school spread, you're still free to participate and keep school in session.
This is nuts.
Can I ask for clearance? Matt?
I thought, yep.
I thought we're going with the rules that existed in the fall. If you're red, you don't play one another. Did that, were those revised at some point? Did I miss that? I seem to be missing a lot tonight.
You know, Jordan is on the call, so we're going to phone a friend on this one.
So, Tricia and Jordan, do you mind weighing in on where we're at with the MIA rules and Cape Town play?
Hey, guys, Happy New Year.
Is he a little louder, Jordan?
Can you hear me now? Is that better?
Uh, it's a little better. You need to shout.
Is that better?
Not really.
Yeah, you're still pretty quiet, but I turned my sound all the way up.
I'll be as loud as I can without yelling too much. So, back in September, the MIA had rules that if you're red, you cannot play whatsoever. That was modified and changed at the beginning of October. That was to adhere to, so Middleton essentially had their prison outbreak, and a couple colleges had outbreaks as well. So, instead of shutting down schools and athletics for towns that had outbreaks outside of the school community, those guidelines were adjusted to, you know, to adhere to these. So, since then, those protocols are still in place for the winter sports. So, like Pam said, for the winter sports, we can play schools that do not have an outbreak in their school community.
But can I ask you something? Let me try to break this, because I'm not quite sure what I'm asking either. So, I understand the rationale behind letting schools play if you live in a big community and there are, you know, other entities at play causing the red. We live in a small community, we're red, and it's not because of a college, it's not because of, you know, something else. It's because of our community. It's because of the people in the community. Even if we don't have a school, an in-school spread, we're still small enough that I think that red becomes somewhat worrisome. So, I'm just confused, I guess. I didn't realize the rules had changed, and it sort of sounds like they're moving the finish line here and there, and I, I don't know. I guess it's not a question, it's just a statement, I'm sorry.
These, it was, again, this is all through the guidelines from the MIA and DECE, so that's what we're following and have been following all along, so.
And Shannon, I'd agree with you. DECE's interpretations have evolved since the summer.
On everything.
Yes. So, now the measure is not community spread, but school-based spread. So, if we aren't spreading in school, we are free to continue forward.
I have a question. Question. Spectators. Are spectators allowed? No. Okay.
Teresa has a question.
Yeah, I was real interested in that answer about spectators, though, because I didn't, we talked about that so clearly last time. So, I guess my question is, knowing that the rules changed, and we've done that at the last meeting when we talked about this, we really, it sounded like as a team, we weren't at consensus, I mean, we weren't universal in our vote on this, but the way we left it was, Trish, in particular, this is your, you're the principal of this school, and with Jordan knowing all of the guidelines and everything. So, I guess my question is, since we're looking at this, and we do have moving target and differing guidelines changing and things like that, what are you personally looking at, Trish? Are you personally only following the MIAA, whatever blanket it is, or do you have other factors that you're considering in terms of your teacher comfort level coming back into hybrid and stuff? Because we left this in your hands.
Yeah.
So, help us understand where your decision-making comes into play.
I 100% agree with you, Teresa, and I really am following the guidelines of the Board of Health, and we've met with the Board of Health about athletics and about returning to hybrid, and they continue to assure us that we are abiding by the guidelines that have been set forth for us, and that is our roadmap, and that is the roadmap we should be following, and we are doing that. We have not had significant issues with our student athletes that have been in the building, have not actually. There have been some in terms of hockey early on that are played in other communities, and those were, you know, closed down for as long as they needed to be. So, we will and we will continue to abide by the guidelines set forth by the Board of Health of our local communities and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Knowing that the Board of Health is there that involves, that alleviates my concern, you know, not just the guidelines that sometimes shift, but that our two towns personally, Board of Health, are informing your decision helps me. Thank you.
Thank you, yes, 100%. They've been fantastic partners throughout this whole process. Again, as we've all said, it's really confusing, and they've been really good at helping us drill down into what the guidelines say and how we should apply them. Very appreciative.
Same with Ms. Aldrich, too. She's been incredible these last three weeks in getting us started and making sure we're all set and so on, so. And I know she's in constant contact with the Manchester Board of Health as well, too, so I think she definitely deserves a shout-out.
I'm sorry, who was that, Jordan?
Cindy, Mrs. Aldrich.
Oh, great, Mrs. Aldrich, yeah.
And I would say, without exception, every meeting there has been a unanimous agreement that the conditions were safe to go forward at each step.
So, at the risk of kind of diverging, coming out of the rabbit hole, and I realize I'm veering off of athletics, but the basics behind this were about the social-emotional keeping students connected. I want to just veer into, I'm assuming similarly, that any other extracurriculars debate, et cetera, are also systems go as we move back into hybrid and are kind of going to be getting the same level of support and clearance and move it forward as well?
Ken, yes, definitely. I hope that they continue to feel that. I think our biggest struggle is with singing, which is a respiratory activity that has been kind of flagged as something we need to be concerned about, but things like debate and robotics and our other clubs and activities have been given the green light to meet together. Certainly, they actually can meet in school if they follow the guidelines and receive my clearance, but once we're in hybrid, certainly, they'll even be opened up even more. We really value all of our activities that we have at the high school and really want to see that connection for kids.
No, thank you, Trish. I know you've been doing a good job, and the point was made by a couple folks, if only there was a stronger than, not lobbying, but a stronger than organization outside of athletics, so, and I know you voiced this throughout the year, so thank you for bringing it up and keeping it going. Again, there's a lot of people, especially the teachers, that are putting the effort in to make this happen, so, whether it's hybrid or in-person or remote. So, thanks to everyone for bringing that, because the social-emotional is a piece that I really come to appreciate my time on board in making that happen.
I agree 100%, thanks, Ken.
So, not a lot more to the update other than to say, again, I preface this all with, we just don't know from day to day what the state will ask of us or what the Board of Health will recommend, but we can tell you is that those lines of communication are open, and people are answering on the phone on both ends immediately. So, we'll continue to talk and consult and collaborate, but as of today, we're continuing with in-person orientation days next week. These were the December makeup days that we ended up having to cancel due to a combination of absenteeism and snow day in that week, but we are ready to go, and these are going to be half-days starting next Tuesday and running through Friday. Students will be coming in, first the middle school and then the high school in small groups to kind of get the lay of the land around the guidelines for hybrid learning and also do some traditional beginning-of-the-year orientation. Obviously, winter athletics is underway, we've already had that discussion, and we are ready to start hybrid on the 19th. I know Trish and Joanne have been working round the clock to make sure we're prepared for that, collaborating with the maintenance team, Board of Health, as Trish referenced, and I think we're there, and we're just going to continue to monitor the situation in case there's something, a curveball thrown our way. We're really hopeful there isn't one, and we're just going to continue to move forward. Our continued work is in preparation for the hybrid beginning. We are trying to relocate the Y. The elementary program is smaller than when it started, but we still have an average of 15 students a day, and we are looking for a new home. If anyone has creative ideas of space that may be available to them, we've been kind of checking different spots off the list, and we've gotten a lot of replies that they're not ready for the public just yet, but we're going to, I'm sure we'll find a solution. It's a, it's a good group, it's a problem-solving group, and I'm sure it will be squared away by the 19th. And then we continue to work on MOA development with the association. Other than that, I think, you know, we're excited. It's a new year. We're hoping for a very positive 21 with everything breaking our way to get things back on a normal track. So, fingers crossed that the COVID conditions continue to break in our favor.
Pam, quick question.
Yes.
And I know this is, I hate asking you this because it's just another, like, thing on your plate, but the calendar on the website, can you just make sure that that's updated to include the orientations days and stuff?
Sure. Yep.
Thank you.
I just want, one comment on the calendar is, we were waiting to do a calendar update based on some of the outcomes that we thought we would have squared away by end of December, and those just didn't come to be. So, I think there's, you know, there are some things that can be updated for sure.
Pam, there was news today about MCAS. Do you want to comment on that at all?
I have not read my brief fully.
I can comment on the high school if you'd like me to.
Sure, yeah.
So, at 8:00 this morning, I notified our seniors that still, that had moved into our district that needed to take the MCAS, like, need to take the MCAS. At 10:00 AM this morning, I received a notice from the Department of Education that says, hey, class of 2021, you do not need to take the MCAS. We will allow competency determinancy, which just means that the student has need to have passed four years of English and four years of history to meet that. So, for the high school, the class of 2021 is fully and clear of meeting the requirements of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and we will look forward to see what the determination is for the screen testing for the class of 2022. As for the lower grades, I honestly can say I didn't pay as much attention, so I cannot.
I forgive you, the $30,000...
I I forgive you the thirty-thousand-foot view. I did not study it, but I do know that they are intent on going forward with MCAS as a diagnostic to figure out um if there's been learning loss this year. But they are pledging to reduce uh the time spent on the test. And that's what I gleaned from my quick read of it. Um, I just, I didn't feel prepared to answer any in-depth questions. But we can have something together for you um next Tuesday if there's really uh something worth researching.
I'm sorry to put you on the spot. I just, it was.
That's okay.
So, I thought people might be thinking about it. And I'm sure the principals will communicate after their families what the what they should be expecting. All right, any, are you, is, are you done with yours?
I'm pretty much done. And the only other agenda item we had was budget, FY twenty-two budget. And there's really, we already talked about the CARES funding changes, which was our big part. We have no substantial change from twelve fifteen, and we have a budget workshop next meeting at which we're going to start to address um reconciliation between what our budget is currently, what the towns are reporting, um, the ability to pay is, and what we need to set for priorities in terms of potential budget reductions. We'll also have some revised assumptions at that point, I'm sure. So, other than that, I thought tonight that there was a potential for some for some change or, um, you know, just it was good to have a meeting on the books in case we needed to report anything new. Um, but things are pretty much status quo in terms of planning timelines and COVID metrics here in Manchester and Essex.
These days, status quo is good. It's a great thing.
Yes.
And we could be wrapping this up under an hour. That's a record.
Anybody else have questions or comments? I do, but is it, does it have to be specific to this?
No.
Is this like school committee comment now?
Go for it, Teresa.
You know how I feel about school committee comment at the end. No, one, so one question is, and it doesn't have to be for tonight, but um based kind of on that public comment that we had, I was wondering if we have an idea on how many families are impacted about this sort of thing. So, Pam, I see you have a something to say about it, and then I have one other question after that or comment.
Yes, I made a mental note, should have made a written note, that I wanted to um just address the question about school choice. We will be, like everything else this year, we're running about a month behind. So, typically, we put up the school choice application um uh window in December. It should be up by end of this week with notice out to families and on social media that the time is to apply. I know that as part of the budget, we stated we need to reinstate not only, it it would be in our best interest if we can um to reinstate the students that should have been enrolled this year and additionally, the students that will matriculate um in this graduation year. So, we will have a more solid number for you with the budget on how many students we need to bring into the system. And then it's a matter of spending February and March, uh doing the math to see if we have the space um to accommodate the number that we want to bring in. So, yes, school choice will be operational for the fall of twenty-one. We'll be posting the application um in hopefully by the end of this week, beginning of next. And then the rest of the timeline hopefully will fall in place because it it's good to run it with the budget and have our some decisions made by beginning of April.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
The comment that I wanted to make was um based on some um parent communication I've had, just something to be looking at, thinking forward in as we head into the spring and everything. I know we're really focused on getting the secondary hybrid up and running. But again, I feel like we we haven't had much of an update from the principals at the elementary level. I know that there's loads of communication going on behind the scenes, but I think that might be helpful. And one um conversation in particular that has come up a couple times is um looking at the fifth grade transition to sixth grade, which last year was a totally different kind of scenario on multiple levels. But um this year is again, unique because of the the situation. And so, what I'm hoping to do is maybe just encourage some consideration about what can be done to bring the schools together, but also importantly, what is being done to encourage independence among the fifth graders in preparation for sixth grade? So, much of of that um fifth grade experience is about becoming more independent as a as a student in preparation. And so, if anyone could speak to some of how that's being impacted by remote learning and what we're doing to really make sure that happens, I think it would help.
Okay.
Thanks.
That sounds great, yeah.
Um, while we're here talking about elementary school, and I think that would be really good to just have an update about how it's all been going with the hybrid program. And then I know it seems so crazy to be talking about it because our numbers are up and Manchester's in the red and, but I know that there are parents who would are dying for their kids to have more time in school. Can you speak to that question? Like, is it being talked about? Would we ever be having the, I don't know? Um, I understand some classes are very small. I'm assuming that we have to keep it the way it is because we need to always have the spaces available open for the students who may choose to come back but are staying more remote?
Yep. I think we're gonna find ourselves in, the two schools have different physical plants. And if we want to bring that grade levels at a time to full in-person and maintain the six feet, that likely won't be possible. If you remember our space analysis at the beginning of the year, to bring all grade levels back at the elementary, we would have to drop back to four and a half foot um social distancing. Otherwise, it will be spotty because some classrooms we can, some classrooms will have small class size and enough space to go to six and others won't. And from first half, there wasn't a way to reconfigure the building in a way that matched the smaller, the larger classes with the bigger space. There's not enough bigger spaces to get to six feet for everybody. So, if we wanted to do just kindergarten, we might be able to do that. But any, I think, once you do one grade, you have to have a a plan for the rest. So, if the goal is to bring back maybe K-two and then three-five, I think we'll have to revisit um social distancing.
Um, any other questions from school committee or comments?
I have a quick comment. This is Gail.
Hi, Gail.
Wa- hi. Warnock and Ossoff, uh Ossoff have been declared the winners.
Oh.
In Georgia. If that doesn't make everybody happy, nothing should.
Not that we have thoughts about that, Gail, but.
Well, I would.
I'll mute. I'll mute and happy, happy.
All right. I'm back now. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Can I ask one quick question?
Yes.
Um, as a follow-up to the to Teresa's question, do we want to schedule school committee time in the near future to relook at the facility um space utilization at the elementary and discuss potential possibilities for bringing back more students?
Can we get through getting the next step in before we do that? This is just off the top of my head, but between teachers and and everything in place, it feels like a lie. Doesn't mean that it shouldn't be looked at, but um I'd rather hear an update first on how it is before we start talking about.
That's fair.
I think we're also at the this, the the rates now are higher than they've been in the spring. So, um, until we get this virus under control and um.
And I ask not because I'm promoting that at this point, just that there's, I think we had a meeting early in the year. There's kind of um, there's transition time that needs to be built in. So, if we're saying we wanna have a meeting, well, we're probably not going to have the meeting to discuss it until February. And then there's all of the pieces that come after for having to implement it. So, if it's something we think we might wanna achieve for later spring when the the numbers subside, then we should probably start working on it beginning of February.
I think that. I think we need to keep our options open for the spring as the numbers subside because I think it needs to be a long-term goal personally. But I'm just, I'm just one of seven.
Sarah, I'm gonna second you on that, but I'm also gonna second Teresa. I I would like to see if it is possible to get the younger kids back um more days. But I would also like to get the big kids back and kind of get that moving and make sure that's okay before we bite off another big chunk, so.
A hundred percent. But I'm a big planner. I believe in having plans, even if we're not implementing things right away.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, that helps. I'll start to sketch out a timeline of if we wanna be ready for about this time in the spring, we should start at X date. That way there, we just have a sense of, I I just know when we start to get into the button, the next few meetings are gonna be so budget-heavy that that will take over, and that will emerge from that, and it's going to be March.
Yeah.
And if we want something to, you know, if we wanna be ready to implement a change at mid, end of March, beginning of April, we we don't wanna lose the window. That's all.
I think we're supposed to do it if and when we can. So, I think having a plan is good.
Okay, great.
Um, anything else? Happy New Year?
Happy New Year.
Motion to adjourn?
She moved.
Second.
Okay, um, so Annie moved. Shannon?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And thank you, everybody. I know um not everybody was enthusiastic about having this extra meeting, but I think it was good to just get all that information out as we uh go back to school. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody. Good night and everyone, thank you.